All to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Crewson. Alderman Florida.
President.
Alderman Behringer.
President.
Vice Chairman Williamson.
Here.
Alderman Moore. Alderman French.
President.
Alderman Carter.
President.
Chairman Kennedy.
Here.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First, we'd like to both welcome and thank everyone for coming out this evening. We know there was some difficulty parking on the lot. However, we do appreciate the fact that you have -- are interested enough to come here today. We recognize that others may be coming, but we thought it was time to go ahead and get started. There were a number of handouts that were given to you as you came in. One is an overview of the budget process. This particular committee is the Ways and Means Committee of the Board of Alderman. The Board of Alderman, as you know, is a legislative branch of government, and this particular committee is responsible for reviewing legislation related to expenditures of funds of the city, as well as legislation related to the city budget. That's explained in one of the handouts that you have, an understanding of this committee, the Board of Alderman general, and the entire budget process. This committee has a number of its members here today, which we can introduce the members of this committee. We have Alderman Crewson, who is here. Alderman Florida, who is to my right. We have Alderman Behringer, to my left. We have Alderman Williamson, who is the vice chair of the committee. Alderman Moore, who's also a member of the committee, who is out of town. We have Alderman French, who is at a community meeting related to violence in his neighborhood. We have Alderman Vacaro, all the way to my right. And then we also have Alderman Chris Carter, who is also at a neighborhood meeting at this hour, and I'm Terry Kennedy, the chairman of this committee. Today, our plan was to have the opportunity for residents, citizens of the City of St. Louis, to get an overview of the city budget. It has been some time, if not several decades, since this committee of the Board of Alderman has held a regular public meeting related to the city budget. The idea today is to give people an opportunity of the community to get an overview of the budget from the budget director, to get a understanding of the issues and the opportunities with that budget, and then to answer any questions that one members of the committee may have, and then you, as residents of the city, may also have. We recognize that this is an imperfect process. We're trying something new with the Board of Alderman, so please bear with us in this process. We would like to make sure that if you have a question, that you raise your hand. I, as the chair, will recognize you, and when we get to that point, please only ask questions, no speeches. I would not like to have to ask you to stop, but I will do so if it turns from a question to a speech. Tomorrow, our plan is to have people -- to give people the opportunity, after hearing an overview of the budget today, the idea tomorrow at 6:30 is to have testimony from the community, your ideas about how you think the money should be spent, what should be the priorities, what should be the areas of concern, what should be the areas of importance. That's tomorrow at 6:30 at this same location. But today is our intent to get an overview of the city's budget. There is a process that the city goes through with the budget. There is a budget division that gets information from the various departments. A budget is put together from that. It is submitted to what's called the Board of E&amp;A. Those are three-member board that consists of the mayor, the comptroller, and the president of the Board of Alderman. They review it, make their changes, and then send that on to the Board of Alderman. The Board of Alderman assigns it to the Ways and Means Committee, which is this committee, and then that committee reviews that budget and makes its changes. The Board of Alderman cannot increase anything. It cannot put something into the budget, but it can cut something out and make recommendations as to where that should go. Once the Board of Alderman is done with it, there's some back and forth that goes with this committee of the Board of Alderman and E&amp;A for a while, and then finally, a final budget is come up with, and the Board passes that by ordinance. All of this has to be done by the last of June. July 1 starts the fiscal year. There is a sheet that explains that entire process. It's a three-page handout for you here today, but I just wanted to give you that quick overview, so that you recognize at what point the budget process is here today. The budget has been sent over to the Board of Alderman. It was assigned to this committee, and now this committee is in the process of reviewing it. As a part of its process, we wanted to have a public process that allow individuals from this community to both understand the budget and then to give your input about the budget. So hopefully, as we go forward, this will give you some explanation of it. Our budget director is very skilled at his work and is articulate enough to give us some understanding, but if you have questions, we will hold that until the end, and then we'll give, after the committee members, another Alderman have the opportunity to ask their questions, we'll open it up to the public in general. So again, we thank you for coming. We give our apologies for the difficulty on getting on the parking lot, but we're working out all of these kinks, and we'll continue to do so, but again, thank you for coming. At this point, we would like to invite Mr. Paul Payne to come forward, our budget director. The projector is -- where is it going to do his PowerPoint? And also, at the end of this, if you'd like a copy of his PowerPoint presentation, we do have a hard copy at the desk at the table, but you can also get it online, as well as see the entire city budget online. On the city's website, the Budget Division, they have the entire budget in this presentation. Thank you. Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. What I was going to present here is a presentation I made to the Ways and Means Committee of last week. I've got the projector set up as an angle to hit the screen, so if there's anyone over there who needs maybe move -- there are some seats on the other side of the room who could see -- need a better angle to see the screen. By all means, help yourself. The proposed FY 2014 budget is $984.6 million. That is an increase of 1.8% over the previous fiscal year. And you can see on the table, it illustrates the various fund groups that we categorize our appropriations each year. The largest being the General Fund is the fund which funds most of our operating services, so most of your parks and streets and fire department and police department. Most of those funds are in the General Fund. It totals $479.3 million, which is a 3.1% increase over the current fiscal year. You can see that the special revenue group of $126.9 million is about a decline of 1.9%. Now, that special revenue group is a group of funds that are dedicated for a specific purpose. So you have the local use tax fund, the lead fund, the building demolition fund. We also have a couple of funds dedicated to public safety. That's what that category has. The decline of 1.9% reflects some decline that we've had seen in both the use tax, as well as the sales tax in the current fiscal year. Grant funds, these are funds that we receive from mostly the federal government, total $53.7 million in FY 2014 proposed budget. That's a decline of 5.5%. Most of that is in the area of community development block grant funding. The debt service fund totaling $8.7 million, that's an increase of 52%. That's actually payments on our general obligation bond debt. So we -- a number of years ago, we passed a bond issue that was supported by property taxes. That fund is utilized to pay off that debt, and that was used for financing some of our repairs to firehouses and replacement of trucks and such. The increase you're seeing next year is the fact that there's funds accumulated there, and we're using the additional funds to offset that debt, but that is restricted into that account, so it can't be used for anything else other than paying off the general obligation bond debt. The capital improvement funds of $37.2 million, that's an increase of 3.3%. The biggest sources of this capital improvement funds are the sales taxes. We have a half-cent sales tax, as well as a Metro Parks tax, and some other funds that we utilize, that are dedicated by ordinance for capital improvements. The increase -- we've seen a decrease in sales tax this year, but the increase you see in the capital improvement fund is almost entirely due to the new park sales tax that was just recently approved by voters, which will go into effect in October, and I anticipate about $1.4 million from that in the first fiscal year, which represents about seven months of collections. The enterprise fund group of $228.8 million, that's about a 2% increase over the current fiscal year. That is entirely consisting of the water division and airport enterprise funds. And the reason why they are called enterprise funds is they operate as a separate entity, as almost like a private business. They generate the revenues, and they expend those revenues, and so they are categorized separately. Internal service funds of $49.9 million, that's almost flat, 0.4%. Again, that's -- those are funds that are charged for services between departments. So our employee benefits fund, your health insurance and all, is paid into a collective account, and that's paid out from that fund. Same thing with our gasoline account, charges to departments. So if you can see, on total, the proposed budget, $984.6 million, so it's getting close to a billion dollars per year, it's up 1.8%. And you can look at the graph below, and you can see the largest slice of that pie is the General Fund, 49%. So almost half the budget is the General Fund. So part of the budget also includes tracking how well we're -- how well or how poorly we're doing in the given year, means tracking revenues and expenditures. These three sources of revenue represent about 50% of our General Fund revenue, and so they're pretty important to how we're doing or how we're going to finish the fiscal year. The first chart you see is the earnings tax. It's about 31%, 32% of our General Fund revenues. Year-to-date, that's through the third quarter, it was up 2.5%. Typically, historically, we've seen about 2% growth in the earnings tax. It'll fluctuate a little bit based on economic cycles, but it's around a 2% growth. We've got a little concern there in that the growth, you can see where the bars in the more recent quarters have declined after some growth earlier in the fiscal year. The earnings tax, by the way, is 1% of personal earnings and 1% of corporate profits, so that's who pays that tax. Now, the payroll tax is similar to the earnings tax. It's a half a percent of payroll, but it's paid strictly on businesses and not-for-profits. Government agencies do not participate in that tax. It is up through the third quarter of 4.1%, which is a little unusual. It usually tracks the earnings tax, although it is on a different base, so you can see variation. In talking to the Collector of Revenues Office, they have said that they -- some of the year, their enforcement capabilities in the last year has resulted in some increased payments on the payroll tax, but I would anticipate that it would follow the earnings tax pretty closely next year and increase about around 2%. Finally, the sales tax, that's just over 10% of our General Fund revenues, and you can see that the year-to-date receipts, at least through the third quarter, were down 4.2%. Now, when we put together the budget for the current fiscal year, we were anticipating a decline. If you remember, last year, we had things like the World Series. We also had a warm winter, which intends to get people out and shopping and things like that, and we saw the results. The second and third quarters last year were up. So in preparing this budget, we're anticipating somewhat of a decline. Now, I will say that this is actually more than we're anticipating, so I do anticipate a shortfall in the earnings tax this year. So in preparing the budget for FY 14, basically, we look at a number of factors. We start with our FRI 13 General Fund revenue base, which was $464.8 million. Now, I'm expecting, even with some shortfalls and give and take, about $3.3 million over that base in the revised estimate. Also, we've got identified about $4.1 million in one-time sources. What that means is there's some fund is paying into the General Fund on a one-time basis, not recurring revenue, but we've incorporated that into the estimate. And then underlying net growth of about 1.5%. That would produce a total revenue base of about $479.3 million. Now, the problem with that is that if you start identifying what the potential increases are of those things that we need to fund, your total needs are greater than your revenue estimate, so you have to take steps in order to bridge that gap. And listed below are some of the increase that we are aware of. For instance, in FY 13, we had some capital allocations from the ward and recreation center accounts. In other words, we're deferring capital expenditures. That's about $2.5 million. We've done other fund reallocations from special funds, including the use tax, as well as some of the public safety sales taxes. That was $3.5 million. We had, this year, as I mentioned, we had a decline in the sales tax, which hits our -- one of the special fund categories, which is the public safety sales tax. Well, the General Fund has to pick up that slack because we'd fallen short in the special fund, and that's -- and so that has an impact on our General Fund budget. On the lease debt, which is the CCC, that's the Sir Bandy's Convention Center, abbreviated, it's fit on there, and then the Carnahan Courthouse. We have a number of lease debt obligations, which are paid out of a citywide account. That's basically debt we're paying off for improvements to the buildings. We have had the good fortune of being able to offset some of those payments with project monies from those accounts in the last couple of years. Those are gone now. What that means is the General Fund then has to pick up those costs, so that -- because we have to pay our debt payments, so that's why that increase of $6.6 million. Police and police pension, they were talking about, we have a matrix step increase for the police officers, a grant expiration, which I will get into in a minute, as well as some pension increases, about $4.4 million. So you add that to the mix. That was about $9.7 million in total. Fire and fire pension, also, they had metric -- matrix step increases. We had a grant expiration this current fiscal year, and health insurance and such. That was about $1.4 million. Then we have to pay the full year's cost for other employee pay and benefits. This year, we had a 2% merit increase. Well, that was -- that's based on the anniversary date. So in this fiscal year, it's about 1% total cost, although it's a 2% increase. Well, the next fiscal year, you have to budget that full cost, so that's an increase in cost. We also see health insurance increases, which FY 2014 are up about 7%. Now, we did have one good indication here, or one good development, is that on the election board next year, there are no scheduled elections, so their costs will go down. So I've got, as you can see there, that's a $1.6 million reduction. So that's every other year, you're going to see that. When it's an election year, election board costs go up. When there's no election, that goes down. There are also some other miscellaneous increases here on the Corrections Division, which they have a large medical contract for medical costs for prisoners or inmates, and that's got an increase of about $400,000. And then there's about a million dollars increase in insurance and utility costs scattered through a number of departments. So if you take that list, it's about $495.6 million. That's $16.3 million over our revenue, and that's actually been culled down from, and you can't -- oh, yeah, you can see it. A preliminary allocation, when you have full requests, are about $35 million over. So this is actually a culled-down list, and even then, you still have a budget gap. So how do you address this gap? And over the last few years, we've been doing a number of things. In budget cuts category, we've got about $9.7 million. This includes the departments absorbing the cost of the portion of pay increases. Next year, if we anticipate something on the order of a 2%, again, on the anniversary date, we're going to be asking departments to absorb that cost. That's about a 1% hit on the departments. There's also a cops grant expiration at the police department. There was a hiring grant. That's about 20 officers, for which we are not -- had funds for. And then we're also proposing, out of those funds from this fiscal year, to appropriate $2 million to the debt of the convention center, so that the General Fund doesn't have to take that hit next year. And again, that's just trying to find a method for bridging the budget gap that we've got this year. Under fund, under revenue reallocations, that's $6 million. That includes a continuation of the reallocation of the half-cent capital funds from wards and recreation center accounts. That's about $2.5 million. A portion of the local use tax allocations, it's about two, also $2.5 million, as well as a charge of some special expenses to special -- some expenses to special funds. And then we have special fund balances. This is not as much as it was in the previous fiscal year, simply, again, because the sales tax was down this year. That's about $600,000. There are certain funds that will have surplus in the end of the fiscal year, and certain funds that have deficit, so we try to balance those out, and anything's available, we will use it to -- for budgetary purposes. This next slide discusses payroll costs. Now, payroll costs represent about 75% of total expenditures. So anytime we're -- when you're dealing with a budget gap, it's almost impossible not to address payroll costs in trying to keep the budget balanced. As I mentioned, the current year's budget includes about $1.3 million for the 2% merit pay increases that were awarded on anniversary dates this current fiscal year. The FY 14 budget assumes the full year cost of the $1.2 million, plus a 7% increase in health insurance, about $800,000, and ERS pension cost increase of about $1.8 million. That's for non-uniformed employees. As I mentioned, also, as a budget balancing measure, we did not include funds for the additional merit, which departments would have to absorb in the FY 14. That would be about $1.3 million savings from that measure. With regard to the police department, it includes the cost of the matrix step increases of $1.1 million, as well as an increase in their pension costs of about $4.4 million, and civilian share of their ERS cost of 0.4 million. Their civilians are part of this regular pension system. That's why they also have another piece related to employee pensions. However, their budget, as proposed, does not assume the cost of expiring cops grant, which is about $800,000, so that would bring authorized officers to decrease by about 20 to 1,245, and includes other reductions of about $3.8 million to bridge their gap. They would be up about 3% overall. And they are continuing efforts to work within restructuring their command ranks to minimize any impact on their patrol units. With regard to the fire department, that also includes the cost of the matrix step increases of about $400,000, their health insurance of about $400,000, and their FRS cost, which declined about $600,000 due to their market performance in the previous Now, they did have one expiration of a firefighter hiring grant, which is called a Safer Grant, from 2010, which hired 29, which was replaced by a 2011 grant, which hired 20. So the difference of that nine is, those nine firefighters are being picked up by the General Fund, of a cost of about $1.3 million. Now, there are still some savings that the fire department is doing with regard to having doubled-up companies. Those are companies where you have a large truck and a smaller unit in the same house, where you, when overtime is such, that you wouldn't have both companies operational at the same time, and that will continue in the next fiscal year. In the chart below, you can see just where the categories of expenditures, again, personal services is about 75% of the total budget. I'm going to run through by general department category, some of the changes. Some of these I may have already discussed, and I'll go through them. General government and finance, that's overall, that's more of your administrative offices, mayor's office, Board of Alderman, comptroller's office, those things. The big decline there is in the Department of Personnel. They had $500,000 in last year's budget for promotional testing for firefighters. Well, that was a one-time from last year, so we don't have to incur that next year, so that's the big decline there. Otherwise, there were department, there were cuts scattered across those administrative departments. Citywide, that's a category, the citywide accounts is a category of the budget where it's not department-specific. It's things like workers' comp, unemployment comp. A lot of our debt service payments are included in there. That $1.9 million decrease has actually got a number of things going on. We have seen a decrease in unemployment comp year-to-date, so that's down by $100,000. We do provide a subsidy to the assessor's office, which is, they generate fees to -- from the state to fund their office, and to the extent that that does not cover their costs, the General Fund picks up that difference, and so each year, we have to monitor that. There's also $75,000 as the city's share of a regional disparity study included in citywide accounts. Now, under the debt, of that $6.6 million I talked about earlier, we are budgeting $4.6 million and assuming that $2 million supplemental in the current fiscal year to offset that other increase. Again, that was just, that's just a budget measure to try to make sure we meet that budget gap. Parks, recreation, and forestry, there's not really much going operationally in difference in their budget. They do have the full funding for the, both the north and south recreation center subsidies, and as I mentioned, too, in the capital fund side, you'll see it in appropriation for the new 3.16 cent sales tax, that $1.4 million. Under judicial offices, that includes circuit courts, city courts, city marshal, those type of offices, circuit attorney. It'll down about half a million dollars. We've got, there's one subsidy from the drug court that is being funded through the public safety fund. The sheriff was down three positions, although those funds, we've been discussing back and forth with the judges, and those funds, we need to be found before the end of the budget is over, but before we've concluded the budget process, we need identified funds for those three positions. The city courts is adding three positions, but there's been a cut in the contractual services side. They were going to contract out financially, which they did not pursue this year, and so those positions are funded for the next fiscal year. Under county offices, as you know, the City of St. Louis is a city not within a county, so we have certain offices, which are typically a county function, that are part of this budget as well. For instance, the Recorder of Deeds, they're cutting three positions, where they're also increasing some contractual costs. So this category also includes the election board, which I talked about earlier. So other than the election board, you've got sort of minimal change, about $100,000 decrease. Under the street department, this includes both streets, traffic, refuges, and towing divisions. Overall, we see a decrease of about half a million dollars. The biggest decline there, after we see some increases in utilities that I talked about earlier, is that our refuse transfer station costs have gone down by about half a million dollars. What that is, is that's municipal solid waste, the waste that you put in the dumpsters and the alleys and not in your rollouts. We've seen that go down over the last few years, and that's a good thing. I think that means that we're either consuming more, consuming less, or using the recycling more, which is a good development. So that actually has a positive effect on our budget costs. Under public safety, there are also minimal changes there. We did have a 100, about $100,000 decrease overall. Other than the Fire and Corrections Department I mentioned before, there is an accounting change, which is SEMA, which is a city emergency management agency. That's actually grant-funded, half of it is, and you'll see it reduced by half, but that's just an accounting change. It's going to be counted in a grant fund. It's a technical thing, but it's not really a change. There is a change in the Neighborhood Stabilization Office. They are proposing a reclassification of three positions. Right now, they've got 28 officers in there, and they want to have, distribute that supervision among three individuals as opposed to just one, and so that's included in the budget. The Board of Public Service, that is a department that includes both the engineering, as well as overseeing facilities management, equipment services, and Soldiers Memorial. There's not much changes there, other than the utility costs I talked about earlier. I will say that, given some of the capital deferrals that we've had, we've seen a lot of our service costs for vehicles in particular, rolling stock, the dump trucks and all, that's gone up significantly in the last few years. So you can see the total proposed reductions of $3.8 million. As I mentioned, the budget includes reallocation of special revenues and certain fund balances from special funds. From the half-cent sales, half-cent capital sales tax, $2.5 million. That includes the reallocation of unrestricted capital funds to offset citywide capital costs. That includes a half a million dollars from the recreation accounts and $2 million from the FY 14 ward allocation accounts. That's about 75% of the normal appropriation. From the Forest Park Fund, this is continuing through an agreement with the Forest Park Management Agreement. They are picking up about $610,000 of the utility costs, which previously were borne by the General Fund, and that's being paid for in the Forest Park Fund. That will continue for another year. The public safety sales tax, half-cent sales tax, the cost of the additional drug court subsidy of $448,000 is being paid from that crime prevention account in the public safety sales tax trust fund. And under local use tax, as in the previous years, there's about a half a million dollars in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and $2 million in building demolition being also reallocated to the excess use tax fund to bridge the gap. I will say, in the instance of the Affordable Housing Funds, that because of some funds that they had available that that they had available that were not spent in the previous year, their budget will actually grow up next year. So they should not see a reduction in their allocation in FY, well, actually, they should see an increase in FY14. And again, I mentioned, anytime we have special fund balances that are available to offset the gap, we utilize those. And you can see, there's more red than, well, there's a lot more red this year than last, although because of the excess use tax fund balance that we ended last year, we have a net $600,000 gain from those gaming funds, citywide capital, excess use tax, and public safety sales tax combined. These next several charts are going to be focusing specifically on the general fund revenues. I mentioned, that's about half of our total budget. On general, on the revenue side, as I mentioned, earnings tax represents 32% of total general fund revenues, and the 2.1% increase represents there $155.4 million. That's about the historical average for that tax. So that does anticipate continued growth, but it's still at 2.1%. Property tax receipts, at $56.4 million, is a 1.6% increase. We have seen some, actually, we have recovered this year after last year's decline, following some of the larger contests of valuations. We often get that when you have an assessment year, particularly at large companies or large properties that contest valuations, those get adjusted. We fall back on the revenue estimates, and then the following year, we pick up on that. So that's typically 1.6% would be what you'd see from the property tax, historical basis. Sales tax receipts, $48.2 million. That's estimated at a 1% increase next fiscal year. Sales tax is not one of our best growers as a source of revenue. It's either, over the long term, it's about 1% or less, and that's what we've seen. Last year was a rather unusual year in which we had a lot of activity, which boosted it. But 1%, it would be a more typical of the historical average. Payroll tax, at $36.4 million, again, that's 2% increase, fairly tracking what the earnings tax would be for next year. Franchise utility taxes, these are the taxes you pay on your electric bill, your gas bill, your water bill, those things. That's what's included in what's called franchise utility taxes. It also includes some payments from the airport and water division, because they are franchises as well. At $52.8 million, that's a 0.5% increase. Most of the, both the electric and gas, they're dependent a lot on whether or not you have a cold winter, warm winter, hot summer, cool summer. A lot of that's dependent on weather conditions. One of the reasons why it's such a minimal increase this year is because in the communications, on the phone, telecommunications tax portion of that, we did get a one-time revenue release from previously escrowed amounts. So that skewed the numbers a bit. Overall, you're going to see about a 2.5% to 3% increase after you make that adjustment. Inner governmental receipts, these are payments from the government agencies. For instance, our EMS revenues, Medicaid, Medicare, those type of things. Payments from the state are auto sales tax payments, gasoline tax payments, those things. Those are estimated at $25.8 million, which is about a 5.7% increase. A lot of that is going to be proposed, both in, for instance, EMS revenues, due to payments from the contractual license agreement that we have with outside contractors. Under licenses, $15.6 million. Licenses are those type, the biggest one of those being the graduated business license. If you own a business, you pay a graduated scale based on the number of employees you have in the city. Well, that's included in that category. That's almost half of that amount. It also includes things such as the amusement tax, which is paid mostly by the, when you go to the football game, the Rams game, they'll pay that. Matter of fact, most of that increase that we see next year in licenses could be driven by the fact that we will see 10 home games next year as opposed to nine, which we saw this year. Departmental fees and fines, $54.8 million, it's about a 1.9% increase. Those are the fees that are charged by departments for user fees. For instance, you go to the park, you rent a ball field, that's in that category. We pay refuse now, refuse fee for their collection of our municipal solid waste, that also is in the department fee category. So one of the challenges we have with that is that, with departmental fees, is that unlike some of the earnings tax and other taxes, which grow with, the economy grow with inflation, some of these are fixed rate fees, so they don't grow with inflation. So one of the things, challenges we have is to continue to adjust those with inflation so that we can keep up, and as a way of managing the budget. Other category are transfers from other special funds. A lot of that, those dollars are actually other taxes. For instance, the convention and tourism fund, which is a restaurant sales tax, that is actually by ordinance in a special fund, and then that gets transferred to the general fund to offset convention center debt payments. Similarly, we have a hotel tax, which is the regional convention and sports facility, it goes into regional convention and sports facility trust fund. That's about 3.5% on hotels. That also gets transferred in the general fund to pay that service on the convention center. So that's, a lot of that is from additional taxes by ordinance that have been dedicated to offset certain costs. But as you can see down by the chart below, again, $479.3 million general revenue estimate, the largest source being that blue slice on the pie there at 32% for the earnings tax. Now, on the expenditures, and I'll go through this quickly, I pretty much touched on a lot of these categories. Again, on the general government, you see $19.4 million, that's down 1.3%. Most of that was the decline because of the test, testing they had in the department of personnel for fire promotions this past year. Finance, 4.2, you can see this increase that's mostly related to insurance and sewer costs. Non-departmental, that's a lot of the debt costs that I talked about. The big decline you see there in red, the county offices, at $8 million, that's almost entirely that reduction related to the board of elections. And most of the other increase, you can see public safety at 3.9%. It's typically higher than the other departments. And such that, 479.3 million in total, which represents 3.1% increase. And what you can see from the pie chart down below is public safety represents more than half, 57% of the total general fund budget. Now, as I mentioned, in starting off, if there's a special fund category, I wanted to highlight some of those special funds. The local use tax was a tax that was implemented just over 10 years ago. It's the local use taxes, those taxes that you pay on purchases, not, that are not within the city, but within, outside the city, it was outstate or something, mostly paid by businesses. Revenues are down about 5.4% year-to-date. Basically, they're on track for a $29 million total, which is about a million dollars less than last year. They do not necessarily follow sales tax trends, because a lot of it, given that it's businesses, could be, you know, one business here has a major computer purchase, and so revenues increase one year, and then they, that was a one-time event, and it goes down the following year. So there's a little bit of erratic performance there, but it is down for the year, and I do expect it to follow, fall about a million short of last year's revenue. In the FY14 budget, got it estimated at $33.2 million. That's $1.9 million up. That includes a revenue estimate of $29.8 million. And the reason why that's higher is because when the sales tax pass on the parks, that tax rate increases your use tax. So there is an increase in the use tax rate. That's not a full year's cost, a full year's revenue's worth, but it would manage to raise our base somewhat. And other than that, I would expect flat results for next fiscal year. It continues the reallocation of a half a million dollars in the affordable housing funds, but as I mentioned, the affordable housing budget will increase by about $700,000 because they had an appropriation of the $1.2 million in their fund balance. Building demolition funds, which also receive a share of the local use tax, remain at the reduced allocation of $1.5 million. The health department's budget, which is funded almost entirely through both use tax funds as well as grant funds, is up at 1.7%. It has about, just under two positions funded due to some changes in grants, but otherwise, it's minimal increases there. Under a couple of other funds, the lead and building demolition funds, these are funded primarily through building permit fees. $2, which was allocated, receipts were allocated to addressing lead remediation, and $2 million, which was allocated for reducing building demolition. Now, there, in recent years, we've had issues with both of those, in that when the economy went down, we had less building permit activity, both of these funds ended up going into deficit because there was less building activity. So as, in the current fiscal year, there was an ordinance passed that increased some of the building fees to address some of the lead remediation efforts. And as a result of that, we do expect that the lead remediation fund will once again be balanced. Building demolition fund, however, still is in the negative territory, and it's gotten a little better because of the building activity has picked up this year, but it is still something that we need to keep an eye on and address in the future. The gaming fund, these are revenues we receive due to activity from Lumiere Place, basically down the landing. We get taxes from that operation distributed to us from the state, and that was as part of state statute. That revenue was down 11% through the third quarter. I don't know if you follow that, but it seems to be an industry-wide thing this year, that revenue has been slipping in the gaming industry a bit. The FY14 budget of $8 million is actually down $3.9 million from last year. That reflects both the decline in gaming revenues, as well as a reallocation associated with the proposed merger of St. Louis Development Corporation with the St. Louis County Economic Development Agencies. We're using that source as the source and offsetting it with gaming revenues that were going to the port authority. So that's more of an accounting thing, but it results in a decline in the gaming fund budget. And the CNT fund, that's the convention and tourism fund I mentioned earlier, that's that hotel, restaurant tax, it's a one-cent restaurant tax, which is used for convention and tourism purposes. Most of those revenues come to the general fund to offset our convention center debt. But we do have two items that we fund out of there. One is our participation in the sister cities program at $75,000 a year, and the other is a subsidy to the grand center for $60,000 a year. I mentioned earlier, some of the things that we've done recently with regard to capital funds, in terms of we're not having sufficient funds for addressing capital needs. This is a, this chart illustrates the distribution of our capital fund allocation for FY14. Total budget, the capital fund budget is $37.2 million. And you can see the largest share of that, which is existing debt, is about $22.3 million of that amount. The proposed budget includes some of those reallocations I mentioned earlier, and it meets, while it meets all of our FY14 allocations, a lot of our longer-term capital needs are still not addressed, and that remains a challenge in every budget that we've been addressing these last few years. Going around, as I mentioned, the existing debt, and that's going to be debt service on the justice center, the Carnahan courthouse, our improvements, other courthouses, our juvenile detention center, all those buildings have outstanding debt, and that's what's included in the debt service totals. Under engineering administration, those are paying for the costs of both the street department and the board of public service, for them servicing those projects that are done through the capital fund. Ward improvements, again, that's $6 million in total. They are receiving about 75% of their normal allocation of the half-cent sales tax. The major neighborhood parks, this includes both the share of the half-cent sales tax, as well as metro parks' sales tax allocations, and the new 3.16 cent sales tax, which will be beginning to be collected in October. We have no allocation for recreation center improvements, as that half million dollars has been reallocated. And the police department, which receives 10% of the half-cent sales tax, will receive $1.6 million. That also is primarily debt service. They had improvements to their neighborhood stations, which are, they're still paying that debt off, and anything that's not used there is offsetting some of the costs of our justice center across the street. This next illustration is showing you what our changes in total personnel for the next budget year will be. There, following previous years, we do have another decline in total personnel. General fund would be down to 1,025 positions, that's about 15 positions. And we've got special funds, you can see, is down by four, and five in the grant funds, and five in the enterprise funds, just about 29 positions. It's not as much as in previous years, but it still continues to decline. And you can see by the bar chart below, the largest department on there would be the police department, followed by public safety. I also added this chart to give you an idea historically where we've been in terms of total personnel. Over the last 10 years prior to FY14, we're down about 738 positions. Of that, 561 was from the general fund. And perhaps you've also heard a lot about this next topic, pension costs. That's one of our biggest drivers in terms of dealing with the, drivers of our costs in recent years, which is causing a significant budget gap. You can see that, going back to FY04, we had about $20.9 million in actual payouts for the budget, these are both contributions as well as debt service on pension obligations. In FY14, this will total $99.8 million, which is about $100 million we're spending on pension costs next fiscal year. Now, we've, obviously, you've been hearing about efforts pursuing these costs. There was a fire pension reform proposal passed, that's still within, that's still in litigation, which we will be hearing about hopefully in the next few months. And there are other efforts underway, both the state legislature, which closed the police pension, and then we, the city has a control over the non-uniform employee pension locally. Those efforts are still underway, but I believe that it's such a large cost, it would be difficult to address any budget gap without addressing pension costs. This is a pension funding overview to give you an idea about the size of each of the three systems. Just to give you an idea, again, we have three systems. You can see the employee retirement system, which is non-uniform, regular employees, that's that first category. Those numbers in red, I wanted to highlight, when you talk about funded ratio from an actuarial basis, what it's telling you is how healthy is the fund? Typically, what they like, you like to see is 80% or higher. And the ERS system is currently funded at 75.3% on an actuarial basis, and on a market basis, at 76.5, or 76.6%. What the difference is, is that in an actuarial basis, there's a smoothing, so that if you have a number of years, in particular for ERS and police, it's over a three-year period, that sort of smoothes out the losses or gains each year, so you don't have a big hit in any given year. So there's always a little difference in the valuation on an actuarial to a market basis. As I mentioned, employee retirement and police retirement use five-year smoothing, and the fire retirement uses a three-year smoothing method. So you can see from the employer retirement system, funded at about 75 or 76%, a total cost of about $35.2 million, and that's a cost per active employee of about $8,100. Under fire retirement, they are funded just over 80%, well, 81% on an actuarial basis, 84% on a market basis. Our total cost next year, assuming no other changes, would be $28.4 million, and that's a cost of about $44,800 per employee. And on the police retirement, they are just under 80%, about 78% on a market, on an actuarial basis, 75%, 76% on a market basis. Our total cost next year would be about $36.1 million, again, assuming no other changes, and that would work out to about $27,000 per active member. So finally, that brings us to a summary. Our total FY14 budget, 900... Our total FY14 budget, $984.6 million. It's a 1.8 percent increase from the previous fiscal year. General fund budget, $479.3 million, is up 3.1 percent, and it bridges about a $16 million gap, which includes $9.7 million in expenditure reductions, about $6 million in revenue reallocations, and $600,000 from special fund balances. There's a total reduction, net reduction of 15 general fund positions and 29 positions from all funds. And again, I'd like to point out that while balanced, there are some longer-term budget challenges remain. So each year, while we've done all these special things, and we've done these reallocations, we do get a balanced budget as we're required to. But I would say that we've got structural imbalances that remain that we need to address as we go forward. And by structural, I mean that the recurring revenues need to be adjusted, and expenditures need to be adjusted, so recurring revenues and expenditures balance out each year and not, without reliance on one-time resources. Again, we are also trying to restore our reserves. In two years ago, or three years ago, when we had the fiscal crisis, FY10 and 11, we had total operating deficits of about $18 million or so. In FY12 and 13, we've had small surpluses. We typically try to get to a 5 percent unreserved general fund balance in the budget, which is generally recognized as a, as a good target. But we're writing out about $10 million. That's less than half of where we should be with net reserves. Why is that important? Because if you have another fiscal crisis, so you would be able, you'd be able to endure that, though anytime, anytime you have a significant deficit develop, that allows you that time to address it without having to make severe cuts in that fiscal year. Realizing pension forms for all three systems and without kicking costs down the road, again, pension costs have been a significant driver in a lot of the budget gaps we've seen in the last few years. As you, as you've heard, I'm sure, incorporating the police department operations into city government with the passage of the recent referendum to gain local control of the police department, that operation will be, will be becoming part of city government. And obviously, looking at that operation for any operational savings between two entities which are combined gives you opportunity for savings, and that's what we'll be looking at over the next year. And then addressing our capital needs over the long term. As I mentioned, one of the, one of the areas that's just taken some of the harder hits the last few years has been capital. Because of addressing the budget gaps, sometimes that leads to us deferring some of our capital needs, and we've seen that. And that is all I have.
Okay. So that was enough, huh?
Yeah.
Well, we, at this point, our, the committee is of consensus, we would like to open it up from questions for the audience. I would also like to introduce who is here, not members of the committee, though. Let me see, who else is here? Alderwoman Moiling Davis and Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, who are also here. And I think we also have representation, I know, from the mayor's office, Steve Rigali, who used to be on this board, who's trying to be quiet over there in the corner, Patrick Brown, and representation from the president's office, would you raise your hand there? And then I know, did see someone here from the comptroller's office as well. So at this point, we'd like to take 30 or 40 minutes to answer any questions. Paul Payne is here to answer any questions you might have after hearing this presentation on the budget. As the first question, what did you hear? Let's try it. Anyone have any questions on anything they saw? This same presentation, we do have copies on the table, if you'd like to take some if you, to go out. Yes, sir? Would you just?
Appreciate where we are.
Oh, they, the, for the, can you come up to the microphone? I know you hadn't planned on that, and that may keep other people from coming.
Just appreciating, well, first, appreciating this opportunity. I applaud the fact that you're all having this evening meeting. It's something as a community we know that we need. Too often, the low-income, the disenfranchised, the working poor are forced in situations where they miss out when these meetings are held during the day, so having this meeting at night. I'm looking around, I'm glad to see folk did come out, and I hope the numbers tomorrow are even increased when we spread the word about, you know, what happened tonight. With that said, my interest is, is in particular this evening, as an avid cyclist in our community, and we have something that's unique to St. Louis and up in Penrose Park, and that's the Velodrome. It's a racetrack that is specific to a certain type of racing, but it attracts people from across the country into our city to ride on that track. Not only folk from the far reaches of the county, but nationally, folk come in to ride on that track. So I'm just wondering, and where I can find information, they're on page 13, there's a graphic, there's a pie chart that shows major and neighborhood parks, and there's $5.7 million allocated for that. And my question is, where can I find a breakdown on what those dollar amounts are, and specific to those parks? Because what I would hope I would see when I look at that is that there's an allocation, a special allocation for Penrose Park in particular, because the Velodrome, being a city, part of a city park, is in dire need of capital improvement, and we as a community that use that track are trying to find dollars to help with that. But of course, I'm hoping that the city will bear the brunt of the cost on at least resurfacing or rebuilding the track itself. So that's my question. Where can we find this information in order to build a case?
The allocations for the capital fund are included in the, we have two documents. One is the Capital Improvement Plan, which is, is available, we have that available. Also, the large annual operating plan, which includes an appendix of capital improvements. If there is not, now, not all of that has been allocated as of yet, but the amounts for parks and such have been identified in here. And if you have any additional questions, by all means, we can.
Both of these documents online?
Yes, yes. I, I don't believe we have the capital one online yet, but we can do that as well.
If you, if you would.
Yeah, it's, by the way, that's stlouismo.gov, and you can find it on the website there.
Thank you.
Okay. Other, other questions?
Hi.
Oh, he, he has something else to respond.
I did want to add to the gentleman's question. There was one section on, on neighborhood parks. There is a process for that allocation that goes through the Parks Committee of the Board of Aldermen. So right now, as it stands, you see the appropriation for neighborhood parks is to be, to be determined by that committee as well. So that's something that develops as the process evolves, but it's going to go through the Neighborhood and Parks Committee. I, I don't know at the moment.
But those kind of meetings are also online. If you go to the agent, there's a section that talks about meetings, city government meetings. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. I also echo the previous taxpayers' accolades about having this meeting and particularly having it at night. The question I had is around the enterprise tax, and I wanted to know what were the departments who are part of that? And I'm assuming when you said that they generate their own autonomous budgets and income, are they required to meet a budget? And if there's any excess, does that go to the city? And then a little bit about the city rec centers, the new ones, are they part of the enterprise? Because they too seem like they have a different kind of management process than we've seen. And I know that many of the voters who voted for Prop P were unaware that there were going to be management services coming in. So if you could say a little bit about why those aren't managed the same way most city rec centers are, as opposed to hiring management teams to do that?
Okay, let me, let me take your enterprise question first. As I mentioned, there are two primary enterprise department, enterprise fund departments. Those would be the airport and the water division, and they generate revenues within their departments which fund their operations. They do pay funds to the general revenue. Water Division, similar to another utility, pays taxes of 10 percent of receipts to the general fund. The airport grandfathered, is grandfathered under an FAA agreement, and they pay 5 percent of their gross receipts as well. But there are restrictions, and so that, those, particularly with the airport, under FAA regulations, you can't take monies from that airport and subsidize city operations with that. They, they will pay, like I mentioned, part of their gross receipts. They will also pay some of the overhead costs, for instance, whether it's department, a personnel, or legal, or whatever, which the city provides, they are allocated a portion of those costs which they pay. But otherwise, you, you can't take revenues from the airport to subsidize city operations. On the rec centers, those are funded through a 1.8 cent parks tax fund that was passed by voters. Most of that money is for the debt service on the two centers, both in O'Fallon as well as Coronalet Park. There are funds also in that budget as a subsidy on the North Side Rec Center, and it just, it just opened, and the estimated subsidy on that on an annual basis is $1.2 million per year. I believe the conceptual design when those, both of those centers were open would be that they would be membership-based, and they would be operated by a separate entity. And that was, I believe, conceptually from the beginning, how they were going to be operated. And so, so you have the YMCA operating those, those operations. But they are, there is a subsidy on the North Side Center of about $1.2 million that's included in this year's, this coming year's budget.
Do you know why that was?
I, yeah, I, I think, given that they were new facilities and they were funded with bond funds, they were going to be something different to where, not like regular rec centers, they were going to be new and state-of-the-art and offer all these services. I believe that was, felt that at the time, that those, those entities which are used to running those operations would be the best ones to engage in doing so.
Other questions? It looks like we have a few perplex-looking faces.
I too would like to express appreciation for holding the meeting at a time that is conducive for, for citizens to meaningfully participate. I have a question about the revenue reallocations. Can you explain what realoc, what you mean when you say reallocation?
When, we have a number of, as I mentioned, in the special fund categories, there are a number of ordinances which say these revenues will be used for this purpose. For instance, let's say, use tax, you've got $5 million for affordable housing, $5 million for healthcare, $3 million for building demolition. The rest is special excess use tax. All right? By revenue reallocation means that, given our budget situations, and it's been over the last few years, particularly with the capital fund as well, we've saying, in this budget, we are reallocating, we're not allocating the full amount in the original ordinance for that purpose. We were allocating these funds for, to address some of our operating budget gap for this particular fiscal year. And that's what fund reallocation does. And you'll see that we've done that a number of years, particularly with the capital fund, going back to the budget.
So when you say that, that the $6 million includes reallocation of a half-cent capital funds from wards and recreation, recreation center accounts, does that mean that you're going to be taking money from the wards and taking monies from rec centers and then reallocating those funds somewhere else?
What it means, what, what it means is that the allocate, the allocation that would normally be going to wards, it's, they'd get 75 percent of their normal allocation, but 25 percent of that allocation, which is about $2 million, would be going to, remember when I mentioned those accounts within the capital fund? Would be going to the citywide accounts to pay the debt service costs that we were incurring on the citywide accounts.
So in other words, you're going to cut money from?
Yes.
The wards, and you're going to cut money from?
Yes.
The rec centers?
Correct.
In order to pay down the city's debt?
Yes.
Okay. Now, one other thing, if you will. When, when you said that, on the Affordable Housing Fund, last year, the Affordable Housing Fund was cut by a million dollars.
It ended up being half a million.
Well, half a million dollars. So those funds are being cut again by a half a million dollars?
It'll be the same amount.
So where did that $700,000 come from?
Okay. Each year, the Affordable Housing Commission allocates its $4.5 million, or $4 million, or $5 million, whatever, to various projects. Now, if those projects are not realized in any given year, and there's a certain amount of time period that they do that, and it depends on what the grant entails, they're not spent, then they can be released. So what this budget includes is a reappropriation of funds that have been released from prior years. So that's why you would not see, that's why their actual budget is going up this year, because that's, those are funds that were allocated before, been realoc, that are now being re-appropriated in this budget for the housing program.
So it's not in a sense of real increase coming from the city revenues in order to fund that?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I mean, it's, it's monies that they had allocated before, which they didn't spend.
Okay.
And they're, and they're being re-appropriated.
Okay. There's some other things, but I'm going to put, oh, one more thing. Can we have more than 24 hours to make comments on the budget? I mean, we need to have a little bit of time to analyze this and really to be able to make meaningful comments, because there's a lot of concerns I know that I have about the budget, especially the disproportionate, and the, the public safety is really way too much. Thank you.
Thank you. We will both look at that. We'll still go forward with the hearing that we have for tomorrow, but as a committee, we may decide to have one other open one like that. But you can also feel free to email us your comments or to, you know, go on the website and make your comments as well. Thank you for your comments. You have another, some other questions here?
What I'd like to know is, when you purchase a car, do you tell everybody?
No. You have to come in the mic.
My question is, when you purchase a car, where does that taxes go to? Local and state? Sales tax? Where does that taxes go?
The sales tax.
Because people are constantly buying cars all the ti, every day.
The sales tax is award, is allocated by point of residence. So if you're a city resident, even if you buy a car outside the city, the, the city would receive the city's share of its sales tax rate. Now, the state receives its share, right?
Right.
So.
I mean, where does that fit in the budget?
Well.
You are in the, you know, state's budget.
Sure, sure. There is actually a illustration in the budget document which breaks out our, our sales tax rate in the city. Overall, it's about 8.491 percent. And of that, 4.1 percent or so is the state, 3.6 percent or so is the city. By city, that, and that goes into not only the general fund, which is one and a 3/8 percent, you got half-cent going to the capital, half-cent going to public safety.
So you break it down in all different categories?
Right. And then there's also a piece that goes to the school board, and there's a piece that goes for subsidized metro.
Because if you buy expensive car, you spend a lot of taxes.
And that, and we get that reference.
I see you doing.
Thank you. One other question here? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to know, what is tax high and tax low? That is always.
I would like to know what is high tax and low tax? Every time you go to a grocery store, when you get your receipt, they've got a high tax and a low tax.
Some, some items are exempt from the sales tax rate, particularly with the state. The state's rate exempts groceries, the local does not, so you're going to see a dual rate. Also, pharmacy is excluded from the sales tax. So you're going to see when you, whenever you purchase something that the rate may be different depending on what portion you're talking about.
Okay, who sets these taxes?
That, that was set by the, the exemptions are set by the state legislature.
Thank you. Were there other questions? Okay. Oh, surely, come right on.
As we know, there's the city police department and there's municipalities around. I wonder, I guess it's safe to assume that there are some projects that we are collaborating with municipal police officers, like District Two will be collaborating with, maybe with police departments, so they don't have to hire as many police officers?
Not to that extent. Did you follow the question? Yeah, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't happen. That, that would not affect the amount of police officers in the city of St. Louis.
Okay. Well, do you think that will be a possibility in the future sometime?
I wouldn't initially say that, but you never know what the future brings, but I don't see that happening. They, they don't cooperate to that level, to where they would end up reducing police officers in the city of St. Louis.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Thank you for your question.
Good evening and thank you for holding this meeting. It's something that our community needed, so thank you very much to you all. My question is, is the city still considering privatizing the water division? No? No?
There was some discussion.
Well, yeah, there's nothing in this budget that assumes privatization of the water division.
Yeah, I recognize that, but my question is, is the city still considering it?
There's, there's been, we've, this board has had no discussion, there's been no board bill. I mean, there has been some talk about it, but no, not that we know.
Okay. I'm asking because I'm just wondering how it would affect the budget if something like that were to occur. Because currently, as, as you stated, it is self-sustaining, and in fact, it pays the city. And hope, if it was privatized, perhaps our water bills would increase, so it would affect us negatively, negatively as citizens.
I believe on our committee, Alderman, Florida?
Right. I believe it takes a vote of the people to sell our water division, and I know that there is pretty much the sentiment that it would affect our safety and quality of water, and it would cause rates to go, to be greatly increased. So, we, I agree with you.
Thank you.
We have another response here. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to give you an example of what you've heard about. That particular company is a company that manages the ability for you to provide the services at a better cost and manage that system better. An example is, is the school board. We hired a company called Johnson Control, and it helped us cut our costs on maintenance fees and things for our school buildings. It showed us how to heat them better, cool them better, all those kinds of things. So, those kinds of management companies do help you operate better. Now, that is what those people sent information out about, but we as a board, this legislative body, have never had a discussion about it. And that's just someone getting, sending their information out about who they are, what they do, and how they would like to engage us in conversation, but we haven't had a conversation yet.
Okay, thank you. My second question is around the, I just lost my thought.
That's okay.
I'll come back when I get to that.
You'll come back, all right. Thank you. Have another question here.
First, like everyone else, I'd like to thank you for holding the meeting this evening. Does the budget reflect the assumption of liabilities from the city's assumption of local control for the police, let alone any reflections of savings that may occur? I'm curious about seeing more details on that.
Thank you. The, while the local control process, and first of all, is passage of an ordinance, which enables it to go forward. At currently, right now, you will not see anything in here that assumes any change operationally between the police department and the rest of city government. You'll see the regular appropriation in there. I do expect, however, once it comes over, that you'll start to be seeing discussions about what units of, that they have, what's, they have a printing function, we have a printing function, you start consolidating them. They, they, I think it's going to be piecemeal as, as we go forward, because you're going to learn about where are the overlaps and all that. I would expect that next year's budget would probably be more indicative of where, what you're going to see in terms of the savings, because currently, we're not assuming anything regarding savings in next year's budget on police local control.
You remember it now. Come right on up. All it takes is a moment.
Okay, so regarding the public safety and the Proposition S funds, specifically the $1 million that was dedicated to grants for youth programs in the city, is that in this budget?
It is, it is funded a million dollars. Now, about 440,000 of that is subsidizing this drug court across the street. There's also a position that is funded through the Department of Public Safety that oversees the programs, and then there's half a million dollars to be determined by the Public Safety Committee of the Board of Aldermen about what groups would receive the crime prevention monies.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If they don't, they don't. We all have questions. You have a question?
Could you just clarify where the, the fund that demolition comes out of? You said it comes out of a separate fund.
There are, there are a couple sources of building demolition funds. One is the use tax, which gives an allocation from, a portion of the local use tax, and that gets building demolition funds. There's also a building permit fee, $2 for every building, $2 for every building permit go, or 2% actually of the building permit, goes towards building demolition. And as I mentioned in my presentation, unfortunately, with the decline in building permit activity from recent years, there's actually been a deficit in that fund. This year was up a little bit, but it's still somewhat underfunded, so that's, it's going to have to be addressed in the next few years.
Okay, are there any other questions? Yes, sir. Let's, she hasn't spoken yet, let's give her an opportunity, then we'll come to you.
I am looking at the chart where it has the funding for personnel totals by department, and my question is, looking at the police line and the public safety line versus the human services and the health and hospitals, what would it take to make a significant flip in the allocation of funds that go to directly support the people that are not police-type funds that need, that need to contribute to our quality of life?
You understand the question?
I mean, like a paradigm shift?
It's more of a general question, but I, yeah, I don't know exactly how to...
Yeah, let's see if we can clarify. So, you, what page were you looking at? Page 14?
Page 14.
Page 14.
Okay.
I mean, basically what you're seeing, yeah, you're seeing is that by, by fact, is that the police department is the largest department of city government, 18, or 1,840 or so employees. Second to that, public safety. Now, the public, the other public safety piece includes the fire department, the building division, which, which basically is the inspectors and things like that for buildings. And across the street with the justice center, MSI, which is the workhouse up on River View, and those are those departments in there. I don't know necessarily what the answer to your question is. Basically, what you're saying is you'd like to see more in the human services side and, versus the public safety side.
Yeah, because if we had more supportive services in those categories, we wouldn't need all the police services that we get.
That's more of a rhetorical question.
That is a paradigm shift, and that's really at a policy level. And so, you know, that's something that we'd have to, that this board would have to consider and look at, and would appreciate your thoughts and ideas on that, on how you think that could be done also. Okay? Now, you know, tomorrow, tomorrow we have the, the hearing where we will be accepting testimony as to what you think should happen with the budget, where there should be changes, where there should be paradigm shifts, at least get your ideas. And that, we're not doing that just for the sake of doing it, we want to hear from you. And that will help shape, hopefully, where we go with this budget and the final outcome. And I did, we do hear you in saying that 24 hours may not be enough, and so then we'll consider that as well and see where else we can go with that. Okay? Were there other questions before we close? Oh, that's right, you did have one. We have one other person who hasn't spoken, then we'll come to you.
Thank you again for holding this. I apologize if I'm being redundant, and you might have already mentioned this, but with the passage of Proposition P and the arch tax, 2.5 million is supposed to be allocated to the city parks. I just had a question this evening of how, since that, from what I'm reading, as a sales tax goes into the general fund, that that will, you correct me if I'm wrong, please tell me, that that specifically gets allocated to the city parks? Because I just have an overall question of how the general funds are then dispersed, but please correct me.
Actually, it's not the general fund. It's going into the Metro Parks Capital Fund, specifically for those park purposes which the ordinance anticipated. So, and in FY14, you mentioned that 2.5 million dollars, in FY14, we're estimating 1.4 million, simply because the tax doesn't go into effect until October, and usually when you have a, the sales tax, they start collecting in October, they remit it to the state in November, the state remits it to the city in December. So, you're probably going to see about seven months of collections in FY14, and I'm estimating that at about 1.4 million dollars. So, that is, has been, amount has been budgeted, and it's in the, in the capital fund for parks. So, that parks dollar amount that I mentioned in the capital fund budget reflects that 1.4 million dollars in receipts.
Alderman, board chair.
Paul, I want to ask you a question. You know how we, we've done the tax for the affordable housing, that was supposed to get $5 million, and we've done the public safety, $1 million, we do this reallocation that you talked about earlier. I just thought of a question when the young lady came up. So, there's 2.3 million dollars that we'll get from this special parks tax. Let's just say a couple of years from now, will it be up for reallocation as well? Because we have a major parks initiative fund, which capital improvement money is used for, and other capital needs inside the parks, so would that fund be eligible for reallocation?
We do not anticipate reallocating any funds, and I, I would not think so. The last time we reallocated any parks funds was during the fiscal crisis, FY2010, 11. That, and those have been realoc, and those have been allocated in full since that time. So, I do believe the intent is to keep that separate from the rest of the funds and to continue the full allocation as provided by ordinance.
Well, I, I want to say, I really hope so, because historically, that is what we do. We continue to reallocate funds, and I want the public to understand and know, and it's not just that we're trying to pull anything over on you, but it's very frustrating for me as a representative of the people that when we pass taxes, that we really use the tax money for the intended purpose that we voted for, and that we stopped some of this reallocation stuff. And sometime I understand also that we don't have a choice, either we lose jobs and lose services, or we reallocate. So, it's really a tough call to make, but it's just very frustrating, and I know I get these comments from some of my constituents about how we pass all these taxes and then we get all these cuts, and it just gets on and on and on and on, and just very frustrating. So, I always like to put things out there so I can hold people's feet to the fire later on. Thanks.
You had a question? Oh, yes, you, you come on, then we'll take behind you.
Pardon me, but this is just a quick follow-up around a discussion on demolition funds, and I'm wondering how, and I'm not sure who would answer the question, but how are demolition funds allocated per ward?
Well, it's, yeah, that's by need.
It's based on a formula.
Go right ahead.
How many vacant buildings you have. Let's say in my ward, I have fewer vacant buildings, I get less...
They can't hear you, you pulled the...
The vacant building is based on a formula, based on how many vacant buildings you have in your ward. So, in my case, I have fewer vacant derelict buildings, I think I get $4,000, and it's not even enough to take down a building. Whereas, I think Sam Moore said he was allocated like $188,000, something like that. So, the formula is dispersed based on need, because we recognize that there is greater need in certain wards, and it's not enough. We know that.
Thank you. And is that contained, is that formula contained in any of the documents that are online?
Yeah, those were just ball parks too, you know that.
I understand.
The whole...
But if, if your question is, are the, the specific allocations that would be coming to each ward based upon that formula in the budget?
Correct.
I don't, I don't believe so. No, just the gem, just to complete the total fund amount.
That's an interesting question.
Right. Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. One other question here, and then we'll begin to wrap it up here.
In the proposed and operating plan, it has where grant funds, which we, that's going to be CDBG funds, they're going to be cut by 5.5%. Is that correct?
Actually, actually, that includes both CDBG as well as some of those, like that cops hiring grant that I mentioned earlier, which is also going away, as well as that shift in the firefighter hiring grant, that safer grant, which has got a few, fewer firefighters in the new one.
But the bulk of it is CDBG.
A, a large chunk of it is CDBG, as well as that's the cops hiring grant.
Okay, okay. So, we're going to be taking 5.5% away from those programs, or losing 5.5% away from programs that significantly benefit low wealth in communities of color. And then we're going to turn around and we're going to take money from the wards and also take money from the rec centers. In communities where, and I'm not going to get into the thing, I'll wait for tomorrow on that, but I think we could really look at this budget and see where we can take funding from other areas, and so that we can begin to proactively and innovatively address the issues that are in particular, that we face in the north side of St. Louis, instead of it being such a punitive approach to correction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for this.
Okay, now, so no other questions to, you have one other question? Okay, come right up.
Thank you, Alderman, for bringing up reallocation, because that leads to my last question that I just want to be clear about. If you could explain to me how reallocation is approached and handled internally so that taxpayers who do vote for and are paying taxes for one specific area five years down the road, that money is reallocated? I was just curious how that happens internally with the, well, if you could just explain.
Sure. And I'll use the example of capital fund. Capital fund, the half cent sales tax of the capital fund, and there, there is a pie chart in the, in the budget document which illustrates how that is. 50% of that typically goes to the ward accounts, 20% for citywide, 17% for major parks, 3% for recreation, and 10% for the police department. Now, that allocation is by ordinance. The, the vote for the improvements, when you, when you approve the, the language, it reflects the state statute, which says by statute, this has to be spent on capital improvements. And then we, the city chose as its allocation policy those five categories, or six categories, for allocation. So, when we faced the, the big, significant shortfall in FY10 and 11, and basically you're making the choice between cutting severely back on services or deferring capital expenditures, we chose to reallocate from that share of funds. So, we said, with regard to the ward accounts, that was reduced from its normal allocation of 50% to, to less than that, and we basically gave them 75% of the normal allocation. That was used to offset some citywide costs on debt, which then reduces the burden of debt on the city's general fund. That's how that occurs. Basically, it's a policy call. And I know that's, it's a sensitive one, when we, when talking about reallocating funds, it's not something that you like to do. As I mentioned, we are addressing a structural imbalance in the budget, and which we still not fully addressed yet, even though we're budget balance from time, from year to year. I, I think you have to weigh things when it comes to, for instance, whether, if it's building demolition, whether you apply the funds to building demolition, if that means that you're no longer going to have inspectors to board out the building and all. So, I mean, that's, that's basically what you do with a household budget when you're weighing priorities. But that's, that's the thinking that went behind that, and that, basically that practice.
With that, we'd like to draw this to a close. Our meeting tomorrow will be, be here again 6:30, and that'll give people the opportunity to come with your ideas on how you think the budget should be and where... to come with your ideas on how you think the budget should be, and where expenditures can go, and new ideas on paradigms. That is important to us, to hear from you directly. Please feel free to tell others and share with them the information. The parking lot, have a question?
You have to have it in writing.
Or if you, if you have some things and ideas, you can put it in writing and get it to us. You can deliver tomorrow.
It's mandatory to speak in writing.
No, it's not, it's not mandatory to speak, thank you. You can, you can submit it in writing, you can speak, you can email it, any of those ways. Okay? So, again, we thank you very much for coming out. Please spread the word, and, and again, thank you for being here. That concludes our meeting today.